All right, let's get this party started. Candidates, can you please join me up front? We're going to be sitting in ballot order. So Bert, Tammy, Gopal, Jared, if that's correct. All righty. And Islamicum, and welcome to the Islamic Center of Frisco. It's great to see some familiar faces. It's also pretty awesome to see some new faces here. Welcome, we're excited to have you guys. This has been a very interesting run this year. So I'm glad all the candidates were able to make it. Really appreciate you guys taking the time to kind of hear from them. I do want to call out that this is a place of worship. So please keep in mind civility. I'm sure you guys are all going to behave yourselves anyways, but let's be mindful of that. I do want to recognize some of the elected officials that are here as well. We have Mayor Jeff Chaney is here in the back. I saw Councilperson Bill Ward here somewhere. Councilperson John Keating is here. Councilperson Laura Rumble is here. And then Sec Rec for SD 30, Patrick Womoff is here as well. Did I miss anyone? It's not on purpose if I did. Boy, I'm so thankful that our elected officials continue to be part of the cycle and continue to share your opinions and voices with the community. And thank you so much for the candidates for coming. I know it's been a very long journey, but the end is near. Just a reminder, early voting is open right now if you haven't voted yet. Actual voting day is next Saturday, so make sure you vote. So before we begin, we have to do some housekeeping. We're going to have an opening and a closing statement. And now, because it's been such a long cycle, I thought we'd have a little fun tonight. So we're going to ask the candidates to play rock, paper, scissors to decide who goes first and who closes tonight. No, just out of one. And I play it a certain way. It's rock, paper, scissors, shoot. All right? This is decide if you're going to be the opening statement or you're going to be the last person to speak. Okay? So you seem very excited, so I'm going to start on this side first. So remember, rock, paper, scissors, and then shoot. And whoever wins gets to decide, do I want to start the opening statement or do I want the last word of my ballot? All right? You guys ready? Three, two, one. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. All right, I think Gopal got that with the scissors, all right? Are you going to do opening or are you going to have the final word? Three. Final word, okay. I know you're ready to go, let's go. And remember, rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Three, two, one. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. You guys want to make this election longer, don't you? Let's try this again. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. All right. Tammy, and final word as well, too. So the format today, it was supposed to be a simple meeting greet, have something very informal. But then everyone said we needed more structure, we wanted more rules. I'm like, that makes no sense to me, but we're going to do that. We're going to have a little bit more rules, but it is not a candidate forum. So you guys have all been through the process. Hopefully everyone knows who you are. The feedback that we keep hearing from the community is, yeah, I get the taglines. I want deeper. I want deeper conversations. I want actual plans. I want actual details to actually how it goes. I want people to tell me what that actually means. And the thing is, Frisco, we have a lot of people, but there's 250,000 of us. How many people actually turn out to vote? So I really asked the candidates, focus on how we can get people out to vote because that's important to this whole process, is voter turnout. If we all don't vote in this room, then we're doing something wrong. So make sure when you go to the polls, bring 10 people with you. Call your friends, call your family, bring everyone to the polls. With that, the structure is five minutes, up to five minutes, you don't have to full take it, to have an opening statement. And then we'll have some questions. They've been submitted online. They'll also be submitted in person right here. So let's see, Noman and Saad and Adnur Bay all have cards. They're going to pass those around. Please feel free to pass those questions around. They'll screen them, they'll moderate it, and then I hand it to me or Saad over here on the committee to get going. I do want to thank the organizers. It's the Islamic Center of Frisco, specifically the civic committee. The two people that really drove this was Noman Shafi and Saad Siddiqui. Give them a round of applause. This was all them. I personally was trying to skip it, then I remember some people in this room owe me tacos and I need to collect, so I'm going to get my tacos after this. But it's important that we all are here together to really understand where we want to go as a city, explain the importance of why we're here. And once again, thank all these wonderful candidates for going through this very wonderful, somewhat wonderful, maybe not wonderful, journey with us. But appreciate the time, the patience to bring us all here today. So that opening statement, we will start with Bert.
Salaam alaikum. Is this on? There we go. Salaam alaikum. Thank you so much for hosting this event at the ICF. Asfar, thank you so much. Amer, thank you very much. Brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so incredibly grateful to be here. My name is Bert Thacker. Nice to meet all of you. I'm running for Frisco City Council Place Two, and I just would love to earn your vote. One of the things I'm sure you've heard a lot about us throughout the entire campaign, but we have to turn out to vote. Right now, this election is absolutely crucial. And in a runoff election, historically, not a lot of people go out to vote. It's one of the most important things that we can do. And part of our civic duty as Americans is to actually go out and participate in the local elections. I would argue that that is the direct side of the democracy that we live in. Your vote, one-to-one, has more power than you know. So we might think about partisan politics left and right, but partisan politics doesn't fix potholes. If you have an issue and you're driving down the street, your potholes will affect your car. Tennis courts are not built properly. You have needs of the community, whether they be animal shelters, all the way down to the way that your property taxes are going up. Those are effectively helped by the city council positions. And on top of that, you have a direct access to people who are in government at the city level. That's right, Todd, we all do. And so I think that one of the most important things that we can do if we want to participate, regardless of what we hear tonight, ultimately the power lies in you, the voter. I remember I saw this meme, and I thought it was one of the best things I'd ever seen in terms of defining politics. It showed a politician speaking on a podium, and they were on the edge of a cliff. And the politician was standing over the cliff on a board. And it was a group of people who were there standing on that board, and that was the only thing that was keeping them there. That is the image I want you to have. Here in the United States, I would argue it is one of the most beautiful things, that the power lies not in the hands of the politicians, but in the hands of the people. So I encourage everyone who is in this room to go out, tell 10 of your friends, whoever you like up here, it's irrelevant. You know, I'm not here to necessarily challenge your notion of why you should like one of us. I'm asking you that if you like one of us, to go out and tell 10 people, 20 people, 30 people to drive out the vote. So hopefully we can have an amazing dialogue tonight. I'm so looking forward to getting to know all of you and answering a few of your questions the best I can. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tammy Minor Shagan. I currently serve on your Frisco City Council. My husband Todd and I moved to Frisco from Chicago in 2004. We raised our family here, our three daughters, and now we are new empty nesters. Today is actually our middle daughter's 22nd birthday. And so after this event, we will be going out to dinner and celebrating her. Like many of you, we have seen Frisco grow, and we've grown with our city. I have been a stay-at-home mom and a working mom. Through that time, I've done tons of carpool lines. I have put together neighborhood events, gone to church here, celebrated many milestones with my family and with yours. And we've seen a lot of growth, 500% in the last 20 years. But I've taken a very proactive role in making sure to shape the city that I love. Whether it's from the PTA or education, arts, nonprofit, and city boards, I've made a positive impact, and that's really what brought me to the city council role. I also was honored to have the Frisco Chamber name me as the Spirit of Frisco. And I also received the Spirit of Collaboration Award from the Junior League of Collin County. So I am a homegrown volunteer in our city. And I felt a calling to run for city council, and that's why I did it in 2022. My parents have told me that when you're faithful with the small things, you will be entrusted with larger things. And that's what I've done. I've been faithfully serving you for the last three years on our city council. When you think about what this election is about, it is really a clear compare and contrast exercise. It is about whether we have qualifications for this role or just simple eligibility. It's about results or just rhetoric. It should be about merit, not mudslinging. Let's talk a little bit about policy. My opponent is for unions, I am not. My opponent is for politicizing public safety, I am not. I am for our police and fire, but I don't believe that our police and fire, our public safety should be politicized, or any department in the city of Frisco. My opponent is for outside agendas. I am for defending and protecting you, our Frisco residents, our taxpayers. My opponent is for higher taxes to pay for the union demands. I am not. I've actually voted to lower your tax rate three times in a row. My opponent is also for government facilities that are mental health facilities. He has said hail shelters, storm shelters, a VA clinic. I am not for raising your taxes for more government facilities. He is also for data centers and battery facilities and manufacturing. None of these are in our 2040 comprehensive plan. I am for high-paying jobs in Frisco. And during my first term, I brought 10,432 jobs with the EDC to Frisco. In my mind, when I look at, you know, what we're going through as an election as well, this is a very public process. You get to know me, you get to know my family, you get to know my finances. Everything is out there. We've had to do multiple surveys, questionnaires, forums. And we are now at a runoff, and we still do not know who my opponent really is. We don't know his job, and he doesn't have a LinkedIn profile to show us his employment history. We don't know exactly where he has lived. He said he didn't live in Little Elm, but that's the place of residency he put when he was running for Congress in 2004. He has said that he is not Indian-American, and he has not been wanting the Indian vote, but then now suddenly he is looking for the Indian vote. He is either Democrat or Republican, we don't know, it depends on where he is. And coming to Frisco, he is a paid actor. He's someone who has put on a great show, put on cowboy boots and hats, and we're not having it, we're not buying it. Leadership is about service. And you can't leave a city that you haven't served. Thank you.
All right, Gopal, you want to get started? Nobody's saying? You had closing, right? Do you want to start, actually?
Well, that was interesting. I think I'm just going to stick to why I'm here and not point fingers. My family and I moved here 12 years ago. We have two daughters. One's graduating Texas Tech this summer. The other one is starting high school, and I'm sad. She's happy, but I'm a little sad. She's gotten so big. She says, Dad, I don't need you as much anymore. I think as a parent, that's the hardest thing you can hear from one of your kids. But she still comes to me when she needs to pay for something, so I take it with a smile. Three years ago, my wife decided to run for Frisco School Board. It was during COVID. There were a lot of things that were coming out in the school system that kind of shocked parents. And it wasn't positive. So she said, you know what? She came to me and she said, Jared, I'm thinking about running for school board, what do you think? And I said, are you passionate about it? She said, absolutely. I said, what I want you to do is, I just had one request, that she works really, really hard because the citizens of Frisco deserve someone that's going to work hard for them. And guess what she's done the last three years? She's worked extremely hard. And guess what? It's not a shock to a lot of people in this room. She's probably one of the best trustees in the whole state, not just Frisco, but probably the state. So I've watched that for the last three years. And then people approached me and said, Jared, what do you think? Do you think you could do that for city council, like Stephanie's done for school board? And I said, I'm not sure that's a good idea. But after much thought and prayer, and people still kind of pushing me, I decided to run. I've been in the financial services business for 17 years. I worked for big banks, you probably know the name, but I don't want to advertise that. But I started my own wealth management firm last year. And by the grace of God, pretty much every client that I asked to join me, joined me. And that made me so proud that so many people took their faith. Because that's one of the most personal things when you're investing people's money. It doesn't get more personal than that. And so running for city council is also that same thing. It doesn't get more personal than that. I was talking to three gentlemen earlier, and they were asking me, you know, what I want to do here? Well, I want to bring better-paying jobs here. Why is it that JP Morgan Chase is in Plano? Why is it that Toyota's there? Why Tesla moved to Austin? Charles Schwab is in Westlake. All those companies could be here. Because they said, what are you going to do with that EDC money now that the Performing Arts Center failed? And I said, that's what I want to bring. Good-paying jobs so people don't have to commute. Look how bad the traffic is now. We have 237,000 people. We're going to 350, whether we like it or not. And if you think it's bad now, woo, you better get a spa day ready because it's going to get way worse. Universal's going to bring 15,000 to 25,000 cars a day here. You're going to want to move. A lot of people are moving because of that. They are. It's not because we didn't have a performing arts center. It's because Frisco is not becoming livable. That's why they're going to Prosper. That's why they're going to Salina, Melissa, Anna, you pick a city, that's why they're moving. So what I'd like to see is that we work on the traffic. We work on bringing better jobs here. And public safety. Why is public safety so important? Because we want our kids to play in parks and not have to worry. I'm the only candidate that has not just fire and police endorsement, but both sheriffs, Tracy Murfree on the Denton side and Jim Skinner on the other. I got those endorsements, not because of I'm a nice guy, but they think that I have the right stuff to bring that to Frisco and Collin County. We are not the safest city anymore. There's this misnomer that we're the safest city. On what metric? I asked David Schilson. He said, Jared, we're not the safest city. We're safe, but we're not the safest. Frisco ISD trustee Mark Hill just had his car stolen, his Porsche. He was at LA Fitness, went to workout, and it was stolen, had his computer and his laptop there. I don't think he thinks it's the safest city anymore. Guess where the car is? It's in Mexico, he said. Apparently there's some sophisticated car ring that's circling Frisco now as we speak, looking for cars. I don't want us to be Dallas. If I wanted to live in Dallas, I would have moved to Dallas. When your car is stolen there, guess what you do? You fill out a form online. They don't even show up. They don't even show up. I don't want Frisco to be that. I hear this term, DFF Frisco, FW, some crazy acronym. Nobody, people that move to Frisco do not want Dallas or Fort Worth. Because if they did, they would go. Please vote for me, Jared Alad, Frisco Place Four.
There's a reason Frisco ISD is called Independent School District. Because there's a differentiation between the school district and then the city councils. There's a threat for our city because my opponent's wife is in this Frisco School District as a trustee. And if my opponent gets elected, then there's a possibility that the confidentiality between the city and then the school district will be breached. I need all of your help to ensure that the school district remains independent, city remains independent. It should be a partnership and not a marriage. I need your help on that.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Gopal Panangi. I was born in India, grew up in Hyderabad, where it was a mixture of all cultures coming together. Iranian chai is famous there, and my neighbors were the owners of Iranian chai. Yusuf and Kassim were my good friends. So I grew up in a culture where we all work together, play together, grow together, and prosper together. I would like to bring the same thing here in Frisco. It is not about what somebody practices as a religion. We all have come, most of us have come either from different city or from a different country to ensure that we have a good quality of life and our children will have a good quality of life. I have focused on that in the last six years as a school board trustee. And moving forward, I will do the same as your school, as your city councilman. I was there in school board for so many years that I live, eat, and breathe school district and school and education, education being the passion. That's why, you know, you'll see some slip. However, coming back to me, I've been here since last 21 years. I live with my wife Vijay and two daughters, Ananya and Anisha. Both have graduated from Frisco School System. And I have been part of this community, serving the community in several ways. I have my own nonprofit which has given scholarships to the high school students. We have given more than $50,000 worth of scholarships. These scholarships are not for the people who are very great in education or sports or fine arts, but these are for the students who are from those impoverished backgrounds, who needs help more to take care of the family rather than to raise their, rather than their pocket money. One such proud example I can tell is Hamna Farooq from Pakistan, who has received the scholarship from our foundation. She studied in Collin College after high school, and then she went to UTD, and then now she's pursuing to become a doctor. I'm very proud that, you know, I'm able to support somebody of that caliber. In my last term as a school board trustee, I had an opportunity to serve you all as a board director of Frisco Economic Development Corporation, wherein I had an understanding of what it needs, what it takes to bring more jobs to Frisco, what it takes to bring more corporates to Frisco, what it takes to bring more, what it takes to retain jobs in Frisco. My opponent just said that, you know, why didn't Toyota come here, right? Toyota did not come here because the population at that time was not the 80% that we have now. We are 80% built out now. So now is the time for corporates to come. That is why you have seen TIAA, that's why you have seen PGA. And then it's just the beginning. We'll have more and more of these things coming up. I had an opportunity to closely observe and then ensure that about 26 projects were approved. I will make sure that, you know, moving forward, we'll have high-quality jobs here in Frisco. And then ensure that, you know, we do not have to travel long distances, either to Irving or Dallas, to have good-paying jobs. I want the people to stay here, work here, so that their quality of life will improve. While doing that, we are also ensuring that more corporate buildings are coming up, the property revenue from those buildings will be coming up. People are spending time shopping here, dining here, so more revenue for the city. Having more revenue for the city, focus on the cost, and then we'll be in a position to reduce our dependency on the taxes from the homeowners, maybe reduce the tax rate, and also maybe increase the homestead exemption, which we are at 15%, maybe increase it to 18% or maybe to 20% for which the state gives us the maximum ability. My priorities are definitely safety and security. If we are not safe and secure, we'll not be here in Frisco. We wouldn't be practicing what we are doing here right now. I would like to ensure that the tax dollars go to the fire and police departments so that they have the ability to hire more firemen, they have the ability to hire more police officers, have enough training, refresh their equipment, have new equipment. I would also ensure that people are spending more time at their home or work or passion or hobbies and not in the cars. So I would like to see what we can do in order to reduce the traffic-related issues. I'm at the traffic department, and then they're already having some excellent POCs. I would like to ensure that those POCs bring in good results and then people will have very good quality of life. So I would like to ensure, apart from all these things, I will be your friend, your voice in the city council. I have the same phone number since last 25 years, and then I have no intention to change it. I have been accessible to all the school district. During my term as a school district trustee, I have been accessible to the community, and then I'll be accessible to each and every one of you. My name is Gopal Panangi. I'm running for Frisco City Council Place Four. Thank you.
Well, this is going to be a fun one. Thank you guys so much for the time, we appreciate it in the opening statements. I did forget to read the statement I'm supposed to read, so let me say it out real quick. The Islamic Center of Frisco is a faith-based, non-for-profit organization. We do not support or endorse any specific candidates. We have forums like this as a community service. We also do things as a happy warming center during the winter months. We have a free healthcare clinic. And actually, this room was an election precinct for the national election last year. So we're happy to be strong neighbors to the community and glad that you all are out here. And we continue to want to make sure we have forums like that to have an unbiased and fair forum for all members of the community. Oh, that was a lot. All right. So we did ask questions, and they were submitted online. Or right now, if you have a card written, you can give it to Noman back there, Adnur was around there as well. And they're going through those cards, and we'll ask these questions. It'll be two minutes per response. We are not going back and forth. I know how some people really like that, but no, we're not doing that today. Two minutes each. If you guys have anything you want to rebut or retort, save that for your closing statement. I think you guys have enough retort back and forth that we probably don't need it anyways. But let's get started. And the funny thing is, the stuff that you've asked are the same questions that have been brought up online and that we already had kind of coming in. So we're going to double-click on some of the themes that we just heard from you guys. So the first one is, what are the most pressing public safety needs in Frisco? And if elected, how would you fund them? Bert, do you want to kick it off?
Absolutely. Look, the beautiful thing about running a campaign isn't just about getting in the office, but it's actually advocacy for the things that we believe in. Some of my positions have spread out to other people. I mean, you've just heard the importance of fire and police. One of the most amazing things that's happened in this election is that I have been endorsed by the Fire and Police Officers Associations here in Frisco. And I think that is partially in part due to the fact that I've listened to their needs, whether it is talking about the equipment. It's something that I've been talking about since the beginning of my campaign, is to make sure that they have the proper equipment to be able to do their jobs, to have an open dialogue and an advocacy for when it comes to staffing issues. You've all heard, you've all heard here about how we're going to lower taxes, et cetera. But look, if you're talking about lowering the property tax rate, but your valuation is increasing, your taxes are going up, but if your rate is not matching with the increase in your valuation, guess what? You're paying more taxes. So it's kind of political football, if you will, to say that, okay, I lowered your rate. If it's 4%, right? And then if it's 200, if it's, then lower it to 3.99%.
Three, two, one. I think you're up to two minutes.
That's two minutes?
Timer back there.
Where's the timer? Just so we can get a sense. Okay, thank you.
Two minutes goes fast, doesn't it?
So the question wasn't answered. What are you going to do or what is the actual threat for public safety? To me, the greatest threat to our public safety is an outside agenda taking over. Last year, we had two ballot initiatives that were rejected by our citizens. And it was to install civil service and allow collective bargaining in our city for one department. And our citizens said, no, we're not doing that. We're not going to take one department away from the governance model and have an outside influence on our budget. Because what we have seen and what our citizens understood as they did the research is that allowing a union or an outside agenda will raise your taxes. And it will potentially bankrupt a city. And if we allow for that, then we are allowing essentially another entity to run our city. And that is not good governance. So I believe that that is actually the greatest threat because every year for the budget, we do ask our fire chief, our police chief, what do you need? And we take care of their needs. We even give 50% of your tax dollar goes to public safety because that is number one for us. And whatever they need, we try to give every single thing, including raising the salaries and adding additional benefits like PTO for our fire department, which is very unusual for most departments. So most fire departments across the state. So we are taking care of our police and fire. I deeply care and respect them. But I will not be meeting with associations that are political and trying to politicize a department within our city. I don't believe that any department should be getting I don't believe that any department should be getting political. It's about good governance. We allow the governance to work and that means all of the city will work together. Thank you.
Just real quick, the timer's right here. Thunbir's managing the timer, so if you'll look at Jane Pointit. It's right here, we moved him up to the front and it's two minutes for response.
All right. As I have mentioned earlier, safety and security are very, very important to each and every one of us. Just to repeat, I will ensure that, you know, the enough budgets are provided to the police and fire departments so that we'll have more firemen, more officers. We are currently at 240,000 population and then we are likely to go to 300, 330, you know, it's only going to increase. It is upon us to ensure that enough funding is provided to them so that, you know, they'll get enough training, the equipment is refreshed. More than all those, all of the, more than these things, one thing that is very important is to have a decent outreach system. I would like the communities to know more about our firemen, more about our police departments. I have done that through Chai Wit Chaney some time ago. You know, we have organized some events where we had the school district, the city council, police and fire have come together and then they have addressed the community needs in a very informal setting. I would like to have those come back and then have those initiatives taken up so that the community will feel confident, they feel secure, and then they feel that, you know, they have somebody to rely on when they have an issue. So these are the things that I would like to focus on. Thank you.
Public safety is bandied around like a bumper sticker. And if they would have gotten the endorsements, these two candidates, they would have taken them.
No way.
And they would have taken it with a smile.
Never. I will never take that endorsement.
And so, that's why it's, that's why so many people, elected officials, want those endorsements. Because they're wanted. And I didn't necessarily seek it out, but I went to talk to them. And not just them, other elected officials, trusted elected officials. And that's why I have so many endorsements, which I will talk about in my closing statement. Not because I'm trying to, you know, you know, show them off like a brand-new car, but just to show the citizens of Frisco that I mean business and I wanna partner with these folks and really partner and sit down with them and be proactive. Because that's important. Because if you wait until there's a problem, it's too late. We need to be much more proactive. I'll give you a specific example. I spoke to the police association. What is the plan for when Universal comes? And they said, Jared, what plan? And I said, well, the traffic mitigation. They said, there is none. They said overtime. We're gonna get overtime. That was the plan. Believe it or not, they don't necessarily want that much overtime. It's very hard physically and mentally. And so I was kind of surprised about that. And so that's why I'm partnering with these folks, because I wanna make sure that you're safe. That's the utmost important thing. That's why you know when I'm elected, I've already told them, we're gonna have quarterly meetings.
Time's up, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can we ask one thing? No comments from the candidates when other people are speaking, please? Thank you.
Sounds good. So this came up actually in a few questions that we got online and not surprising, but the future of downtown Frisco will be great once it's done. But right now, downtown Frisco has been a mess with the road construction and local businesses are suffering with no relief from the city. What would your plan be as city council member to support the businesses that are struggling until the construction's done? And we're gonna reverse order at this time, so Tammy, you're up first.
Well, I am proud that in my first term, first of all, the vision was approved for downtown. So getting something started for our very core, the heart of our city is very, is important because we did notice that there was a lot of bedrooms, what we would call the businesses, but there was no place to gather as a community. And we wanna be able to provide that, a square, a true square. So we're manufacturing that square. But it is causing a lot of construction, a lot of difficulty for our small businesses. So what we did was create basically the first connection of the Economic Development Corporation, which is the sales tax dollars, to our small businesses. And that did not exist before I was on council. It was something that I'm very proud that our team was able to put together, this connection. And that is continuing. So we're helping with the marketing. We are helping with them with infrastructure. We did see and hear from our downtown businesses that it's not enough, so we then moved it into as well this Community Development Corporation to see, can we expand the scope? We're also hearing again, it's not enough, what else can we do? So in our most recent meeting, we decided we've gotta increase the scope. The listening part is extremely important as we work on this together for the city of Frisco. We also hired a downtown liaison to do more listening, more feedback loops for our businesses to our city council members who represent. And I would also say that working with our chamber, they have done such a great job to help get the message out and how we can support our small businesses that are, are really going to be struggling right now, but on the flip side of it, they will be very successful because we're building the walkability. We're building a destination for visitors to come and to stay and play and enjoy our downtown. So I will continue to do that. I will continue to fortify, listen to our small business owners and expand the programs that we've already started. Thank you.
All right. Bert, let me know when you're ready.
Okay. So I've spoken to a lot of people in downtown and some of the ideas, look, at the end of the day, we have some of the best traffic engineers in the country who live here in Frisco and work with our incredible city staff and are part of our city staff. So I would definitely rely on them for their ideas in order to optimize traffic flows. But I think a few other things have to be done. I have outsourced ideas from city leaders, both current and former. Some of the things that they've recommended to me is, hey, privately, we would love to see if we could use some E D C dollars to fix our infrastructure and maybe go back to the general fund and see if we can do a one-time grant for struggling businesses. Some ideas that I've heard from small business owners are with the incoming World Cup that's coming next year, why is there not a program to get out gift cards or something that highlights our businesses? Maybe with the World Cup coming next year, we have that Chyron that's at the bottom where they do advertising. We could have a lottery where small businesses could advertise for free if they pull it out. I mean, there are an enormous amount of possibilities, but one idea which is failing miserably is this notion of having a downtown liaison and all they're doing is putting out a banner. I can't tell you how many businesses are absolutely upset because all they're getting is a banner to get them out, you know, to get out the businesses. There's no, you know, I've spoken to small businesses who've said, look, the city council doesn't care about us. They don't come to our openings. I've spoken to many members of the Indian and Pakistani community who have opened up businesses and they say not a single city council member has shown up, not a single city council member has even cared to come. And our permitting process is incredibly difficult. We don't have an escalation point within our community to be able to get answers. And I think these are some of the ways where we can not only add value, but we can also create a bit of an outreach because, look, at the end of the day, we don't live in Dallas, we don't live in Fort Worth, let's not turn us into D F F, F F W. Let's be Frisco. Thank you.
All right, we'll go with Jared this time. We'll flip the order this time. I think you went last, right? So you'd be first this time. So it wouldn't be, yeah.
I heard, I heard someone just say, small businesses downtown are having difficulty? Really? They're closing. I ate dinner, or I'm sorry, I had lunch with someone on planning and zoning and her husband. And we talked to the owner and I asked him, how are things going? And he said, Jared, it's terrible. I said, why is that? He said, look at, look at my restaurant, it's half-empty. It used to be full. And then we got to talking. He said nine businesses failed, that he said. I didn't verify the number, but that's what he said, nine. And counting. There's few more that are about to go out. So the word difficulty, when it's your business, that's not the right term. It's not. We need to communicate better. I was talking to a gentleman that had a company here. He moved it to Carrollton because he said these E D C money is nonexistent. And I asked him, I said, is there any chance we can get you back? He said, Jared, I've already invested millions of dollars in Carrollton for my company. But he lives in Frisco. But he said, I wish you a lot of luck because I hope you can make a difference. Well, I am gonna make a difference. Why? Because I listen. I listen to these folks. I sat with that business owner and I, we, we talked for like 10 minutes and we came up with a couple of ideas that might drive some traffic to his restaurant. And he said, you know, I really appreciate that. I went to the city council and it was all on deaf ears. There's businesses, they can't even get inside their business. How are they supposed to make, make a living? Where was the communication to make sure that when, I get it, they had to fix the road, but where was the communication and a plan to make sure that they could even get inside? There wasn't one. Thank you.
I have my office in downtown Frisco and I know the difficulties. I know that businesses are struggling and I also know that the south side road is almost finished and then they're working on the north side of the road. I drove there today and then I see a very welcome sign that, you know, they're working very, very fast. The businesses had issues with the signage and other things. The city has already taken care of. When I was in the E D C, I was the one who was the group of people who approved the downtown liaison role. And then that person is connecting with the downtown businesses to ensure that, you know, their issues are resolved. Are all the issues resolved? No. It's a work in progress, just like the road is work in progress, even the work with the downtown businesses is work in progress. Already, the Frisco Chamber has reinstated one of the Race to Receipts program. So I would like to encourage all our community members to know more about that and then drive the community, drive the traffic to those businesses. I would also like to encourage and sit with the nonprofits so that, you know, they have the spirit evenings and then things like that so that, you know, communities are coming together and then work with the, or, you know, encourage the, patronize the small businesses that are in the downtown. Already, a temporary parking space has been provided in Fourth Street. So there are certain things that are happening. It is a work in progress. We are waiting for the World Cup to come here. There are so many things that are happening. Things are happening in a very rapid speed. We need to be very cognizant of what, what is happening and then figure out solutions as to how we can resolve it. I've been in the center of it and then I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay. So traffic has come up, so let's talk a little bit more traffic and let's actually get some details. If elected or continue to serve on the city council of Frisco, what are the top three things you would do to improve traffic in Frisco? Bert, you ready to kick it off?
Sure. So I've said it before, we hire among the best traffic engineers in our country. Let's listen to them. And the thing about plans, whether it's a 2040 plan or a 2060 plan or, let's just pick a different date, 2070 plan, whatever, plans are great, but we have to take a look at our needs today. So some of the issues that I wanna focus on isn't just traffic, it's also the infrastructure that you see in the downtown area. I walk through downtown, you can go on my Facebook page, you'll see a video, where there are downtown neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. You have open ditches that flood according to a resident. There are sewer pipes that we have here that are from 1920s that are made with the original clay. And I think we can do more than one thing at the same time. We can modernize some of these neighborhoods, which would also not only improve our traffic flow, but also safety. I've spoken to many people there who fall. They park their car on the side of the grass, they open the door and they tumble out. And some of the other things that we can also be doing is increasing the availability of our internet, our fiber connections. How many of you are so exhausted with the moment you're driving and all of a sudden you lose your signal and you lose your GPS? Or you're in the middle of a call, you step out and now you don't have cellphone signal? So, look, I get it. Traffic is absolutely one of the top priorities I'm gonna be looking at, especially with the coming of World Cup. Jared brought up the fact that Universal Studios and that traffic study is gonna have 15,000 to 25,000 people. We need to have mitigation plans for emergency vehicles. What happens if there's an accident on the Dallas North Tollway or the 35? What happens when there's an accident in downtown or emergency services are needed and you have thousands of, tens of thousands of people coming here for the World Cup? These are challenging questions and I think we have some of the best engineers in the city and a very capable city council that can work together to fix these issues. Thank you.
I didn't quite hear the top three things that you will specifically do. One of the things that I have, will specifically do, and I actually just did that this week, is reaching out to some of our micro-mobility private partners that are out there to hear from them. And what can you do to help us in Frisco right now? So we should be seeing one of those types of vehicles in town in the next couple of weeks that will just show what is possible. And that's how we have to do, get this done, is reach out to partners that are out there because we can't just have it where it's raising your taxes to fix this problem. Secondly, continuing to work with the Regional Transportation Council. This is a group of regional leaders, 45 elected leaders, to work on the traffic issues in Frisco and the region because traffic is a regional problem. When you have the population moving to 12.5 million people by 2050, there's no way we can get people around, especially for cities like Frisco, that do not have public transportation. So we've gotta come up with regional solutions that can create more innovation in this area and follow the plan, the Transit 2.0, which is the next 50 years of transportation that is currently being worked on. And third, it's really, you know, you plan your work and then you work your plan. And, you know, I'm glad that my opponent thinks our traffic engineers are the greatest department. They are, they really are. They have done such a good job. They continue to push the envelope on what Frisco can do. You can find all of the information on friscotexas.gov with regards to technology and implementing smarter signals and the data that is being collected to understand which areas need to move faster. So we will continue to work our plan. Thank you.
Traffic solutions is definitely one of my priorities. When I moved here in 2003, the population was about 55,000 people and then the traffic solution was adding more lanes. But we added 240,000 and then we'll go to 300,000 and then more. So now it's not the time to just add more lanes. We need to be very smart about how we handle the traffic. And then already we are, I met with the traffic engineers and then there's a P O C happening in place to figure out what is the best way of moving the traffic. We already have some cameras. How can we use the data to ensure that, you know, the real-time solutions are being provided? Also, I would like to continue to encourage our department to ensure that, you know, should there be one extra left-only lane or, you know, increase the left-only lane length so that, you know, the traffic flow will increase. I would also like to look for some new solutions, like we had in our comprehensive plan, 2040 comprehensive plan. Maybe on Friday afternoons when we have more and prayer sessions happening, partnership with our Frisco I S D so that, you know, the Memorial High School parking lot can be used when the school is not there in summer. Or, you know, when there are big Eid happening, then maybe, you know, partner with Frisco's Toyota Stadium and then, you know, have more people move north-south along with the Frisco First Street. So I would like to encourage to look for solutions that'll be helpful. Probably on Saturdays in the east Frisco, when the Hanuman Temple, a lot of people are going there, figure out some sort of a micro-transit that goes into the communities of Richwoods and Lexington, picks up people and then goes there so that the number of vehicles on that premises, you know, are reduced. So I would like to continue to look for solutions. Very soon, you know, we'll have the Toyota Stadium reconstruction is happening, reinvestment happening. So we'll have more offices there and then people would like to come to downtown. So I would like to have some micro-transit solutions to be there so that they just park there and then use the micro-transit and then come here. Thank you so much.
How many people here have been at a light and it took you three cycles before you got through it? Me too. What we're doing isn't working. We gotta start thinking outside the box, bringing in experts that can partner with us. Not that, it's not anyone necessarily's fault, but we just need to bring in people that are experts in these fields that we can work with. Because it's getting to the point where people are getting so frustrated. They are moving. They are. So we need to start bringing in those folks to help mitigate that. I counted on a major road. It was like 26 lights in a four-mile area. It was like 26 lights in a four-mile area. 26. I was like, what the heck? I had to count because there were so many of them. That seems like that's the plan. Let's just add another streetlight. That's not a plan, that's a Band-Aid. We need a real plan. We need to partner with our leaders. Jared Patterson, who's the US Rep for the Denton County, just awarded several months ago, infrastructure dollars to part of Denton County. And I reached out to him and I said, "How come, how come you didn't give any of that money to Frisco?" And he said, "Jared, I don't have a relationship with anybody on city council." I said, "Really?" He said, "No." Most of the leaders, Ryan Williams, the Denton County Commissioner, Sheriff Murfree, Daryl Hale, none of these folks have a relationship with them. I think if we can start building bridges with these other elected officials, we can start solving a lot of the problems that we have. And so that's what I want to do, to start to get the ball rolling. It's not going to be a quick fix. It's not. If you think one of us is going to be able to snap their fingers and get it done, it's not going to happen and it's going to take a lot of work. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to drink some water and sit down. Let's, I'll take some of these questions now.
Okay, I've got a lot of audience questions coming in and some of them are kind of common to all. It's all about diversity. So one of the questions that I've kind of combined together is, recently, the Islamic Center of Frisco and other faith institutions have faced acts of Islamophobia, anti-Semitism, and bigotry. As a city council member, how would you support efforts to combat hate crimes and promote safety for all religious and cultural communities in Frisco? And Tammy, you want to start?
So, the work that I did in Frisco before council was all about bringing our communities together. And that was important to me because it's not what I grew up with when I was in Rockford, Illinois. It was 90% Swedish and I was the only Korean in the classrooms and really, very small Korean community. So to me, coming to Frisco, it was important that we have an integrated community of all religions and all cultures. And that is the work that I've done. Part of that is creating the Multicultural Advisory Committee, the first one ever within my first term as governance chair. It was important that we have some representation from our different cultures. So now that is something that will continue on and you can apply to serve, which I definitely encourage you to do. We also created an international festival on the citywide level. That was something I started in the schools, multicultural festivals, and I'm happy that they continued to expand in our schools. But we never did anything as citywide, sponsored by the city of Frisco. And so I'm proud that that's something we started. It was one day and then the next year was three days because there is so much to celebrate in our city. And we do want people to build relationships with each other. I think the most important thing we can do is each of us personally, when we meet people in our different communities, in our neighborhoods, that we start to get to know each other. It really starts small. These changes do not start large, they start small. They start with getting to know each other on a personal level. So I encourage you all to do that. I think as city council members, one thing we have done is listen to people as they come and share their concerns with us at city council, even though we cannot do a lot of things because we don't handle some of these issues at the federal level, but we are here to listen. We are your representatives. So I encourage you to continue to do that as well.
So, words are great, but actions speak louder than words. So while my opponent just got up and talked about how she, you know, endorses multiculturalism, et cetera, let's talk about her campaign a little bit. My opponent's campaign has led to an enormous amount of, I would say, targeted rhetoric, not only against communities, but let's say against the Indian community. What she said. My opponent, her campaign, has led to me being struck at the polls by someone. And that person is sitting here in the audience and if that happened to me, that person would be gone from my presence, period. Next thing, hey, look, we have a member of the audience who called me an invasive species. That is unacceptable, right? Right. So along with that, we have, we have people who are sitting in this audience that should know, my opponent said that she stands up to bullies, whether they're 300-pound firefighters or black women. Maybe that's why the firefighters endorsed me. And more importantly, I stood at the polls right next to Jeff back there when there was a caricature of another person who was running in place four, where they drew her very grotesquely, wearing a turban with a "no" on it. Now imagine if that was Sadaf who was running and they drew her with a hijab. We should be outraged at that. So, the first thing I did was I stood up to bullies, I went and spoke to them. I have absolutely spoken to every single community that I possibly could and they have rallied behind me, not because of just empty words, but more importantly, because of the fact that we care about one thing. The only colors I see here are red, white, and blue. We are Americans and I will stand up for everybody in this room. Thank you. So, as a member of your city council, I promise you one thing, that I will look past our differences, I will heal our communities together, and enough of this empty political rhetoric. This is political theater. Let's just call it for what it is. It's Jared, actually.
Bert, why'd you have to steal my thunder? Actions do speak louder than words. I was going to talk about that myself. That was an unfortunate incident that did happen at the polls. And I didn't know about it, but my wife did and she drove there immediately to try to figure out what the heck is happening. She did. But that person had already been chased off by Bert and a few other folks. And the most disappointing thing about it, we had city leaders there and they did nothing. Absolutely nothing. My wife and I put a Facebook, the very next morning, we put out a post saying we condemned that action. That's what a leader does. A leader stands up. A leader stands up for a community that didn't have a voice that day, that no one else stood up for. And I'm going to do that for you too. I will. We did it. I've proved it. And we were one of the first to condemn it. And that's what you need as a leader. Someone that will stand up for other folks. And that's what I'm going to do for you. Thank you.
I am a prime example of multicultural and then multi-religion upbringing. While I was a child, I told you that, you know, I had Yusuf and Kasim as my neighbors and I also had Koshi Samuel as my friend from 5th grade to undergrad and then now he's in Austin. So whenever there is Christmas, we always say habit, it's a ritual for us to drive all the way from Dallas to goat and then have meals with them. So that we have continued and even our children are continued. So I strongly believe that while the paths may be different, but the end goal of each and every person's, from the spirituality standpoint, is the same. We are all here to ensure that, you know, we have a good quality of life. Our children will have good quality of life, they also grow spiritually properly. I have ensured that my children understand all the religions and then they, they follow, you know, the, our own religion, but at the same time have a great understanding about all the religions. I would like to ensure that cooperation will happen. From, I just want to also comment about the incident that was, that has happened. While that incident has happened, which was very unfortunate, also, my team, just because most of my team members are brown in color, we were targeted as H1B people and then racial profiling was done. I have not seen any of my opponent or their team members come to me and then said, "The only person who came to me is Jason Yang. He has posted saying that, you know, I'm very sorry for what has happened to you, it shouldn't have happened." So this is not the Frisco I have not, I have come to in the year 2003. This has changed drastically and then I would like to work very hard so that the young kids who are growing up will have the Frisco the way it was when it was in 2003. So I'll work very hard to ensure that the community is coming together, they'll work together, and then play together. Thank you.
Okay. Next set of questions that I got was of transparency. What are your views on an open and transparent government, including city council members' conflict of interest? What steps would you take to improve transparency?
Start with Bert. Okay. First of all, Gopal, I just found that out. I condemn any act, I condemn any act of racism towards our community, period. However, at the end of the day, let's get back to the basics at hand. Like, these are, this is a serious issue about transparency, at the end of the day. My opponent at the Frisco Chamber of Commerce forum said that the only way you could get into a leadership position is through a political appointment. So, one of the central tenets of her argument is that, "Oh, I don't have leadership experience because I didn't serve on a board." Well, I found out the other day, I couldn't have because somebody would have blocked me. She did it to another person on this stage. So some of that transparency needs to be, hey, what are the metrics needed to actually serve on a board? Another incident is, if you go on the city's website, this has to do with everyone that's sitting in this audience, your experience or whatever you're doing should not be a reason you should not be allowed to run. And if you are going to run, you should have all the requisite data to run. The city does not have accurate data on elections. Their packets were wrong that they sent to us. These are things that actually matter for people who want to get into government. The dates were wrong. Next thing is, when you talk about transparency, what about the RFQs? We saw this Performing Arts Center, but we did not have access to the RFQs that were rejected from this Performing Arts Center. There are still public information requests about these RFQs that were going to be put out. So, there's a lot of issues that we have to fix. And one of the things that I will absolutely guarantee everyone is that I believe in an open and transparent government. Government should not be obfuscated nor should it be hidden behind the walls of private meetings. Decisions that are made in government, decisions of how bids are awarded, that should be open to everyone because everyone deserves a fair shot. So, thank you very much. I hope it's, you hear that I have a commitment to transparency.
I think transparency in government is important, especially on the personal level and then through the governance process. Transparency should mean then also we know what your birthday it is. My opponent, when asked when his birthday was during a Dallas Morning News interview, had to look it up on his phone. Do we know where he works? We need to know where his job is. Why don't we know these things? There are things that you need to know about each of us and it's all out there, it should be out there for public record. But on the process side, when you do apply for a board and commission, we get a whole list of names, about 150 people applying for about 30 spots. And my process is, I go through and I take a look at their email or their phone number and try to reach out to them during the process. It's either at the beginning or towards the end. But to me, it's extremely important to me, if you are raising your hand to serve in our city, that you get some sort of communication from a city council member. And so when somebody reaches out and says, "I'd like to request a meeting," I check them off my list and I take that meeting and I do the work to get to know you. And during the process, I tell everybody, "I'm so glad you're applying, I want to get to know your story, I am only one vote." This is actually a process that happens with seven different people. And you never know what's going to happen because it's seven different people that choose. So it is just pure fact that it is a political appointment because it's made by the people in the political process. That doesn't mean you won't get it, it just means that is the actual process. And I don't want people to be discouraged if you don't have the spot. I ask you to always apply again, apply again. The other thing that I was able to add as governance chair with the committee and approved by city council was the prerequisites. It is important to know your city a bit before you probably apply for a board and commission. So, we added a few more checkboxes for people to help us see City Hall 101, did you do Citizens Academy for the police and for the fire? Did you do Leadership Frisco? Where else have you served? And that has helped us with more transparency in the process.
Yes. Paul, please. Gopal.
Our governments have evolved over a period of time and then transparency has not been a major issue for many, many years. For instance, I've been in the school board for the last six years and then all the checks are all out there on the website. So all the information is already available. But what I'm really concerned from the transparency standpoint is that, you know, there are certain things that are discussed in the executive session in the school district, there are certain things that are discussed in the executive session in the city council. If my opponent is elected, then I'm very concerned about the transparency because something that needs to be confidential from the city's standpoint may be breached and then it might go to the Frisco ISD, which I am not very comfortable with. Thank you.
Can you give me the question one more time because I'm hearing a bunch of different answers?
Yeah. What are, what are your views on an open and transparent government, including city council members' conflict of interest? What steps would you take to improve transparency?
Thank you. Is everyone here familiar with Ken Paxton and Angela Paxton?
Yes.
How about Greg Willis and Jill Willis? Everyone know who they are? If you don't, Greg Willis is the DA for Frisco, Jill Willis is a judge. I didn't hear anybody talking about conflict of interest there. Angela Paxton and her husband, he's Attorney General, I didn't hear anything there. What you heard there was the most qualified person. That's what you heard. And since my opponent decided to bring up, or in the other race, decided to bring up that conversation about running for board, I will give you my version. She was gracious enough, she did meet with me and I will give her credit for that. She was only one of three that did. Three of them didn't, one of them didn't even return my email. But when we got to that meeting and I was talking with her and she was very gracious and I started explaining my background and my history and what I can do for this position, she cut me off. And she said, "Jared, this isn't a skills position, this is a political position and we get to decide." And that's exactly how she said it. And I was kind of taken aback, but I appreciated it because she was honest. And she was honest on those recordings too, that came out. She was very honest about that. You got to hear everything about everybody, calling people a monster, calling someone an idiot in the Indian community. That's what you got to hear, that's the transparency we got to hear. That's not what you're going to get from me. Thank you.
All right. So, technically, we're at time for closing statements, but one question came in that I didn't want to ask, but it's actually really good. So I'm going to ask the candidates, can you guys hang for an extra eight minutes? All right. So, this campaign's been ugly. It's probably been one of the ugliest ones I've seen in Frisco in terms of all the fun stuff that's been going on. And when I saw this question, I'm like, man, I don't want to ask this, why do you ask this? And he's like, no, you got to ask this question, so here I am. And I look, I'm like, hey, Dan, you want to ask this question? But, we're not going to play by those rules, so. This election cycle has received, or reached, new levels of divisiveness with social media smear campaigns, racist pictures, secret recordings, assaults when recording, insertion of politics into public safety alerts. And the reality is, the election is not the end, it's the beginning. The beginning is serving on city council. If elected, what would you do to help put this genie back in the bottle and how are you going to bring our community back together after this election? We're going to start with Tammy this time.
You know, there is a difference between governing and campaigning. And I have done the work of governing, but the campaigning has been new. And I did not realize how difficult it would be. There are definitely things that happened that I never expected and I own the words that I have shared too much in a trusted home of a former friend. And those are things that turned into political weapons and I never expected that. I think though, when you make mistakes that are public, or even when you have wins that are public, you know, you have to decide how you're going to move forward. And for me, it is about having the tough conversations. I'm going to call out Patrick Wamoff. We never had a conversation before. That actually brought about our first conversation. And it was actually a really good one.
And it was actually a really good one, it lasted an hour and a half, which surprised me. But those are the kinds of things that have happened because of the difficulty through campaigning. And it's allowing me to hear different voices through the entire process that I might not have heard before. And I am doing the work of trying to repair, which I know will take time, but I appreciate that our community... Give me back three seconds. I appreciate that our community is willing to have those conversations with me and give me the grace. I do think though, the election process, it's still about qualifications, not just about whether you're basic eligibility.
Bert?
I am actually, I applaud you on having difficult conversations and taking the road to understand, you know, things that are not easy to talk about. However, let's get back to the governance side of it. Yes, Tammy, I understand this is your first campaign. You were appointed. Let's talk about the giant elephant in the room, right after the election was canceled. And as a result of that, you were put into a position of leadership without having a single vote from the citizens to put you in. And now that you are in this campaign, unfortunately, those recordings were made in, what, the beginning of the year? They weren't made before you joined, they were not made in your first term, you know, in the first year of your term. They are made because she talked about me, madam, running in the race. She talked about Cy running in the race. That's why. She called Cy an idiot. She called me a joke, which, hey, look, I'm all about that. But with that being said, you have lost the support of sitting members of city council. You have a fellow sitting member of city council who has questioned your integrity. You have lost the support of a large chunk of our city workers. Fire and police represent an enormous branch of our city workers. You have lost the support of not only them, but also other members of our city government, as well as leaders all around, from Jared Patterson all the way down because you spoke about him, right? So it is going to be very tough for you to repair those bridges, for lack of a better term. And I've, look, I'm not gonna get into personal mudslinging. What you said, you said. You have to own it and you are. But what I will say is this, the way that we move forward is by understanding that a lot of maybe unsaid wounds have been opened up. There were a lot of people who felt disenfranchised because, precisely because of this campaign which is bringing out, you have to be part of a club, you have to be part of a group in order to run. That is clearly not the case. So we build bridges by getting back to work. We build bridges by making bridges and not isolating ourselves on islands. Thank you.
All right, Jared, you're up.
I'm gonna put someone on the spot that's in this room. Her name is Kelly. And three years ago, when she ran for Frisco ISD, she took a lot of arrows. She took a lot of mudslinging. But me and my wife, we stood beside her. We did. And to this day, we, me and my wife consider her a friend, even though we're on different political spectrums. Because we didn't appreciate what had happened to her and we didn't appreciate what happened to my wife. But we didn't change. We didn't. We could've. We could've been just like the folks that are what you guys are talking about. But we haven't changed one bit. And you can ask Kelly that, she will tell you that. She was on an island, but we took her in and she took us in. And that's what leaders do. Leadership, doing the thing that's most difficult, making decisions and partnering with people that maybe you don't necessarily agree with. And I'm gonna do that for you folks. That's why my wife and I spoke up when that happened, that day at the polling. We're gonna do that for you. And I hope and I pray, when I am elected, hopefully, by the grace of God, you will find that out. You will find that out. And so I lead by action, not words. Thank you.
Leadership is about telling what positives you have got and then win an election. Leadership is not about looking for negatives, whether they are right or wrong, putting it out there and then try to win an election. You have never seen me posting anything negative about my opponent. And you'll not see also. And I know very confidently that between now and June 7th, there'll be more mudslinged on me. Please be aware about that. And I'm not worried about it because I have the qualifications, I have a heart to serve the community, and I'll continue to do that. What will I do once I get elected? I will ensure that, you know, we are all working together so that the city remains to be the same city that I moved to in 2003. I'll work to ensure that the community members, whether it is nonprofits, they are all coming together, whether multi-religious teams, groups that are coming together, so that we have certain sessions, certain programs, so that we are working towards healing the community. Elections should not be like this. Elections should be in a way that people will figure out who is the right person and then vote for them. Not trying to figure out what is negative about them, whether it's right or wrong. First, you put a doubt and then, you know, let them respond to it about whether it's upon the others to, you know, disprove the allegations that have been. It should not have been like that. And then I will ensure that I'll keep a very positive campaign moving forward. And I will ensure that the community heals once we move forward on this. Thank you.
All righty, almost at the finish line. So we're now at the last part of the program with closing statements. If you remember, we had a robust game of rock, papers, and scissors to see who would have the last word. So Tammy would have the last word and then Gopal will have the last word. So Bert, you will have two minutes for a closing statement. And as I said in the beginning, the goal of this entire gathering was today is, we need to get people at the polls. So kind of think about that as you respond. Go, Bert. Campaign, this campaign, I learned a lot about myself. For example, I didn't know my birthday. I also learned that apparently I live in a post office in Little Elm. So these were some of the funny things that you learn about yourself in a campaign. But the other thing that I've definitely learned is that I have learned to, I've learned that we have so many beautiful people in our city. We have knocked on thousands of doors. That is not, you know, you've seen me, Venu, and, you know, other people have seen me. Heck, John, I think I knocked on your door once. You know, I've knocked on doors, I've met people, I've spoken to people, and the ideas that I have, they come from you. And my job is to amplify your ideas. The best, the wisdom of the crowd is the one that is the most important. Anybody, and I've said this before, time and time again, anybody who tells you they pulled themselves up by their bootstraps is lying to you. That is, that is horse hockey. It is because it takes an army of people to raise somebody up. And I'm fortunate, I'm privileged enough that I get to be in a runoff. I spoke in front of City Hall the day after the Kashmiri event happened. If you recall, there was a crowd of people that were out there. And when I went up there, I realized that there was a time that we can fan the flames of division or we could bring our community together. And you know what I said? I read the names of the 26 people who were killed and then I paused for a second and I asked the crowd to remember, you know what is the central tenet of Hinduism? It's called satya, it's called truth, right? And so I read the last name. The last name was Sayed Hussain, a Muslim who sacrificed himself to save the life of a Hindu. Ultimately, we're all in this together. We're all going to die. That is an absolute certainty. This world was fine before us, it'll be fine after us. But hopefully, it'll be better because of us. And I, I just want you all to know one thing, this election will be over soon. And you'll have to look at your friends and you'll have to look at your neighbors, Lance. People are gonna be going down the street and you will know the mean things that they said about you. You'll be sitting in coffee shops, church, mosque, temple, whatever.
Time's up, Bert.
Be kind to each other. Frisco will thrive. And please go out and vote. Thank you.
I think what you saw again tonight is not any specific answers, a lot of political theater, soundbites from my opponent. Because that is what he does. He's a paid actor, he's a professional campaigner. This is his third campaign. He is someone passing through Frisco desperately trying to get in an elected office, to get into higher office. I've never run for Congress, I've never run a partisan race. It's not my interest at all. I am a resident of Frisco, I've lived here for 20 years. My family is here, my daughter is probably waiting for this dinner that we're gonna celebrate her birthday. But this is my home. We have a unique spirit of Frisco that we must preserve. And we need to look at the council position as someone who cares about our city, understands our city, knows the values of our city, will represent that, will also do the work of our city and has proven to do the work that is required in governance. I have been able to manage and approve balanced budgets in our city. We've also brought the first corp, the first Fortune 100 corporation to Frisco. We are the number one safest city in Texas. We are the number one best job market in Texas. We have created programs to expand our cultural affairs. We have been able to get projects unstuck, like The Hole on the Toll and like Grand Park and our downtown. There are so many wonderful things happening in Frisco right now. I'm proud to have been part of it. I'm excited to continue that and the vision that we have created together as a city. And I hope that you will vote for me. I have earned my way back into the seat. You can find all the accomplishments that I have done, not just on council, but before council, at tammyforfrisco.com. And I do ask you to reach out to me directly. If you have any questions, I will answer your questions and I'm here for you. Thank you.
All right, Jared's up.
So I'm gonna talk about endorsements real quick and I'm gonna explain why they're important. Senator Angela Paxton, Daryl Hale, county commissioner, Chris Hill, county judge, Bryan Livingston, city council, Jared Patterson, US, or state rep on the Denton side, Ryan Williams, county commissioner, and last but not least, Denton County Sheriff Tracy Murphy. Oh, I left someone out, Jim Skinner. Sorry, Jim. Don't get mad. Hopefully, no one tells him. I got those endorsements because those folks believe in me that I'm gonna be the right choice. And I'm gonna partner with them to make the city of Frisco better. But I want to talk about an endorsement that I was a little surprised I got. Dallas Morning News. And normally, I don't typically agree with them and they don't typically agree with me. But I was particularly proud of that one. Why? Because that's a bipartisan endorsement. I keep hearing partisan, partisan, partisan. Well, guess what? Dallas Morning News says, "I'm the right leader. I'm the right choice." And they're not partisan, at least on my, my scale. And so I want you to take that into account. Affordability in the city of Frisco is getting out of control. My opponent voted for and campaigned for $1.2 billion in taxes and spending in November. But guess what? The citizens of Frisco were smarter than that. They said no to that. And then now in this election cycle, he was asked repeatedly, "Are you gonna for the Performing Arts Center or against it?"
Time's up, Jared.
And he could never make an answer during that whole time. Please elect Jared. Thank you.
When you have to fill a position in your workplace, what are the three things that you look for? First, experience. I have the experience. I have been serving the community for the last six years as a school board trustee. I also have an experience of being as a board director at EDC. So Frisco ISD, which brings the families, Frisco EDC, which brings the jobs and corporates. So I have both the experiences that are perfectly needed to serve our community as a city council member and then I have both of them. What is the second one that you need in order to fill a position? References. References from your previous friends, employers and all. I have five of the school board trustees endorsing me. Dina Davis, Mark Hill, Keith Maddox, Renee Sample, and also Suresh Madhwa. They are the ones who have endorsed me. Who, what else is, what is the third one that is needed? Wherever you are moving to, those people, they should be comfortable who you are. I have the mayor endorse me. I have four other council members. Bill Woodard, of course, is outgoing. Let me take John Keatings, Angela Pelham, Laura Rummel. I have these endorsements. So I have the experience, I have the references, and I have the team welcoming me. These are the things that are needed. I am not going to do any negative campaigning I have not done. Even though, you know, there are certain things from Texas Ethics Commission, I have not filed my treasures, papers, it was about a week or 10 days late. How big is it? How big of a deal is it? Just because it is an investigation, putting it out in the mailers is not sufficient. You should also ensure that the investigation was resolved and then the Texas Ethics Commission is okay with that. Even I have some data that, you know, my opponent has not filed the CFA, Campaign Finance Reports.
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we got there, folks. Thank you so much for the time. Now, since we spent some quality together, I'm gonna ask something for you. Everyone put your right hand up. I promise to vote. I'm not done yet. I promise to bring 10 people with me. I promise to buy Amir tacos. Thank you all for coming. Please see the candidates at the end, we appreciate the time.